I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting to order for August the second, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to recognize that we're pretty fine land, traditional land of nature, sweet, prenation, and homeland of the Maykey, and that we are all pretty people. Thank you. Next, we have an approving of the agenda. Councilwoman, Deputy Mary Lumber, all in favor? Very, thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Ethel Timman. Would you like to come forward? Happy evening, everyone. Yes, do you know everybody, or would you like introductions?
A few of them.
Well, let's just, let's start by introduction. Okay. Ethel is the manager of the Best Western Hotel across the street here. She's with the Chamber of Commerce. She's a very busy lady, and we'll start.
Councilor Holman.
Councilor S. O.
Deputy Mayor Brian Lumber.
Councilor Thompson, thank you.
Thank you, Mom.
And we've got Andre, Councilor Andre Poole, and Councilor Kathy Valentino. And we have regrets from Councilor Mordell to see. And I will call either we have Anthony, City Manager, we have Tammy, our executive assistant. You have us all, you have our attention.
Okay. Okay. So I was given ten minutes for my presentation. And as you know, I am the general manager of Best Western Thompson, and at the same time, the city vice president for Chamber of Commerce. So I joined a Chamber of Commerce last, last year. And I went to be a member of the board for me to advocate on the labor here in town. So right now, I'm presenting to you, representing the business people. As we can, as we have experience, employing people here in town is very difficult. And at the same time, we haven't had any experience that we have a good and stable operations because of labor. So that begins my advocacy. Okay. Um, it was very hard. I came here in twenty-eleven, and I started working Best Western in twenty-twelve. So in my ten years in Best Western, I never had a good and stable workforce, especially on my housekeeping. Department. And it's always a revolving, revolving door. You will ask me if I am paying a good salary. Yes, I am paying a good salary. Ever since day one, I'm already paying thirteen dollars per hour, even though we only have like a minimum of twelve. And then for my, for, for my, after three months, I'm evaluating them and giving them another, another dollar if they are retained. And being a team leader, and at the same time, after eight months, I am giving them additional dollar. And at the same time, we, as a hotel, if we are performing on our occupancy, quality services, and which we are being greeted by Best Western, Best Western International. We are given incentive by our company for us as a program for retention and loyalty. Okay, so that this is the situation, even though we are giving good salary and retention program, we are still having problems hiring people. During the pandemic, it big, it really worsened during the pandemic when the government gave the EI and the support for, for, for workers to stay home. And this, we really had a headache because we are competing with the government. Because during that time, people will only, will only work fifteen days and then quit. And we found out that the EI will only have this much of hours, and we computed it is exactly fifteen days, and then they can apply for the EI during the pandemic. And right now, and ever since twenty-twelve, people will only work for you on a max of four months, and they will not show up. If you are lucky. If you are not lucky, you will only hire, you will hire them, and they will just last one paycheck, and they will not stop. This is already a norm that I already embrace, because ever since I started working and to start the operations of the hotel, this has never been. To an end. It's always there. So the reason why, like I said, the reason why I, I went for chambers is because I want to brought this problem. I want to end this problem, because I think, and I, in my belief, we can have a solution for this. Okay, so one solution that the government, federal and provincial, has given us the express entry for federal, LMIA under federal. And then at the same time, for, for our provincial, it's a direct hire. And then forwards to M and MP and NPNT, which is Manitoba, Manitoba Program for Immigration. Okay, so what are the loopholes and what are not working on these avenues to get foreign workers? See, foreign workers is our immediate help in this. And getting a foreign worker is not easy, and it's very expensive. Okay, going through LMIA, if you need five people, you need to pay fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars per person. And you will not get it today or two months, six months. You will get them two to three years before you will get them. But these are the ones for the front, are the programs that are there to suit our needs. Which I don't see it suiting our needs. They are, they're gonna be here three, two to three, three years after. Okay, so that being said, all these lines that the federal and the provincial gave us to get foreign workers has a lot of red pay. Okay, and then as well as, I will explain to you, in LMIA, during those times before COVID, our hope is LMIA. This is Labor Market Impact Assessment. In this Labor Market Impact Assessment, you will be granted to have foreign workers if you are operating and your employee, foreign workers is, and your, and your, your foreign workers is only thirty percent of your total employees. You can also get an LMIA or a foreign workers through LMIA if your province is at the five point two percent of unemployment. Okay, so, and also, you will pay fifteen hundred dollars per person. And not only that, we will show, you will be paying the airfares or the airlines their first two months of their rent. And it's really costly for, for, for employers to have them. But we would like to have them, because they are the ones who are gonna stabilize our operations. But it is so difficult to get, because during that time, before COVID, the unemployment rate for you to qualify, your province should have five point two. Okay, our province have what? Our province has six point eight during that time. And you know why? You know why it is not applicable to us? You will see the Manitoba Labor Market statistics during that time. Interlake Manitoba or Parklands in North Manitoba is only three point, four point five. But they will not consider that, because my, our province is six point eight. But in actually, in our, here, in Thompson, in the north, the unemployment rate is four point eight. That is a discrepancy that I would like you to see. Okay, but after that, when we have already started that, my advocacy, we talked to our MP to have that perfected, and now LMIA did not, they, they, they removed the thirty percent cap for foreign workers, and as well as they remove the province, the province unemployment rate for us to qualify, qualify LMIA, which is the right? But still, when you go for federal, it will be a very extensive process. So now, we had to connect, we, like for me, I did my research, push different, inquire different people on how we can have a good a, a share of immigration that will be, not, not will cost time and not will be expensive. Okay, so during the June, June, last week of June, John Reyes, Minister John Reyes, came to Best Western, and they are seeking for some suggestions on how we can improve the immigration, especially the north. Um, the suggest, this is just a comparison that I am gonna tell you. During the time that I really had, I needed to have foreign workers, I expanded a lot of ways on how I can get them not through federal, because I know federal is very extensive. I saw this program, Rural Immigration for Manitoba. In this Rural Immigration for Manitoba, we are not considered as a rural area. And would you believe Brandon is considered as a rural area?
We're, we're very aware of that.
Yes. Um, which is, I, I'm so desperate to have foreign workers. Why is this? That's why I push and push and push. And now, during the time John Reyes was here, they have given me some information about Morden Immigration. The city of Morden has its own channel for immigration. And they suggested to me that I need to tell you guys that there is this channel that we can have too in the north. If you will support us, and if you'll carry on with this campaign, that is what they sent. So I will just explain to you how the immigration of Morden. So the immigration of Morden, the Morden, city of Morden has already identified what kind of skilled worker and skilled workers and non-skilled workers they need. And so they posted, and, and those are the things that they need most. When they, when they haven't identified what the workers or the immigrants have been want to have in their, in their city. Then, not only that worker would get into the, into the city, but the whole family. Nearly, they are all approving fifty families a year in their city. And in their immigration program, they are cutting the red pay. It's only six months to get the foreign workers. And to have them landed here in Manitoba as a permanent resident and not a temporary foreign worker that only has a work permit. Of course, there are some, some qualifications that they need. We will post, like for them, they need co-secondary education, they need to have settlement funds, which is good. The settlement funds will help the settlers to be here and instantly pay whatever they want, purchase a car or whatever. And then and there is no need for them to go through federal, which is good. Because in, in MMP, or Manitoba Provincial and Municipal Immigration Permanent Nomination Program, you will still go to Brandon, which is very, it will take you a while to have your papers approved, but in them, there is no express entry for that. So it goes through only in the provincial. This is what I would like you to know and to please help us. I am not only speaking for Best Western Thompson, I am speaking for McDonald's, Canadian Tire, Walmart, every hotel in town. They are needing, we are needing help. See, I would like to let you know, during the pandemic, I have a lot, and, and after pandemic, I have a lot of resumes coming in, fifty, thirty. In those fifty and thirty resumes, I will call them for interview. The only people will show in those fifty and thirty resumes will only be five people for interview. And those people, and those five, we can only get one of those five that will show up. Now, I've posted in internet, in Facebook, I post, I posted in radio and newspaper. I can barely get one.
Thank you. We're very aware, and we actually have been working with Mayor Morgan, Brandon Burley, on some of his ideas. And that, it has basically taken the community, the Chamber of Commerce, the businesses, actually, the ones. I'm gonna let Anthony explain how we have applied for immigration and been refused and why.
So the city of Thompson did apply for the rural immigration designation that she mentioned. And when we received the rejection letter, we were told it was Brandon, we were pretty shocked as well. So we asked for an explanation how that was rural. We were told it was basically because it was outside of Winnipeg, that was considered rural northern. Um, but as the mayor said, we have had discussions. Our previous economic development officer, Keisha, had been working with the province on trying to set up a model, but she's no longer with the city. So I think it would have to be a discussion on striking a committee with by yourself and the Chamber of Commerce, Councilor Law, to work on this, whether it's administration or whatever.
So what, what I married and you say though, so in respect, I mean, there was some rejection by the province, there is a model in Morden. So we talked to Morden to see what they are doing, and how we can work together, because why would we try to redo something that's already done if possible?
So when our economic development officer was here, I had been putting her with the mayor of Morden, and he had offered to either zoom with us or come to Thompson or bring us down there to meet on how their program works. Because we were just seeing, this is FCM and AMM meetings that we were in attendance with, where we have these discussions that we told them the business owners are struggling with Thompson. So that offer still stands, as far as I know, and we can execute on that if that's council's question.
Also, one of our issues up here was they did use the unemployment numbers against us when we were applying, and they were using the issue that we had too many unemployed persons in Thompson. But again, some of them reached out to you. You only had to work two weeks to get unemployment.
Yes.
And then they didn't really want to, but they were using those numbers against us when we applied, saying we had too many of our unemployed people in order to be seen as needed for immigration. Uh, Councilor Valentino?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smook. Thanks, Ethel, for your presentation tonight. And I just wanted to follow up on Mayor Burley and the city of Morden. Although on the city side, we've talked to him, and I was a part of discussions with him about this and the success of his program. It would be worthy for the Thompson Chamber of Commerce to reach out to the Morden Chamber of Commerce to have that discussion also, to see how they helped facilitate the immigration program there. And the other side of it is through the Association of Manitoba Municipalities. We had our June district meetings here and had the presentation for all municipalities in the north within our district about the bringing immigrant workers into not only Thompson, but within our whole region. And that presentation was put on by, I believe he was an immigration lawyer, and he did come with Minister Ryers a few weeks, was that a few months ago, I think, when he met with the chamber? But that presentation and information and contact info is also on the Association of Manitoba Municipalities website that was given to all of the municipalities within Northern Manitoba. So our Thompson Chamber could also reach out to our Northern Chamber of Commerce so that we have a stronger voice for the north to be identified as rural and not just Thompson doing it. Because the more people that advocate for the north as being rural from chambers will help the process for this immigration to work for Northern Manitoba as a whole, and that's something that we have been advocating for. So thank you.
And yes, when Minister Reyes was here, we had mentioned your name, Ethel, for him to get in touch with you, as you've heard that he hasn't yet. But that will definitely be a reach out for us to see why his office, because he was definitely could see, we toured him around the businesses, we toured him around a lot of things that day, so he does understand the need in the north. So I think it's very important that we'll follow up on that. Uh, Councilor Thompson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you, Miss Timman, for coming and providing us your presentation. Very much appreciate that. I just want you to be assured that your service industry isn't the only industry that will be finding people. Certainly, reached out through both the province and through my employer at LA, where we've offered salaries that are in the six-figure range and can't hire people to come up here, even out of university. Not a lot of long experienced people. I think the issue of employment is such a complicated issue and has so many variables in it that it may not be fixed with one issue. It's odd that in a city that does have, we do have a significant amount of unemployed. It's more those people don't want to be employed than are looking. But I, I'd see a need for foreign workers and certainly support any efforts the city can help with. But I encourage you to keep trying and working together. Thank you again for your dedication.
Thank you. Any other questions to push to speak? Councilor Cooper?
Just for a comment. Uh, you said your, I know I've been doing two. You look at the numbers, thirteen dollars an hour, forty dollars is fourteen. Take five hundred and twenty dollars a week. Thousand forty dollars. Take home eight hundred dollars every two weeks. It wouldn't last me four days. So I see what the problem in Thompson is. People can get money for doing nothing. Why are you gonna go to work? Make a thousand dollars every two weeks. Take home eight hundred. Your rent costs you eight hundred dollars. Your food costs you uh, you know, whatever, water bill. Pay some places, right? So why do these people wanna go to work? Why would they go to work? Right? I always found in my business, I paid more. You started now, it's even, it might have been about fifteen dollars, right? They know, they're still losing, right? But there's a problem too. It's too much easy money. And then again, the, the money is not big enough to take somebody off, say, social assistance, and put them into the workforce, just take them for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, uh, Councilor over?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I mean, your suggestion, the chamber should do this, and the chamber should do that, and that's all important. But I think as a city, electoral officials, we have a responsibility to, to, to both business and residential to do what we can. And may I suggest that us as a city, certainly maybe a discussion after the delegation leaves or an incoming position, direct administration to work with Chamber of Commerce in Thompson, who in turn works with Morden and their chamber as well. I believe working together is a lot stronger than saying, chamber, you go and work with another chamber. That's just my perspective, and it works every time, as far as I'm concerned. So we can be so much more powerful together than we are alone. And secondly, it's not a business problem. It's a city of Thompson problem, and that's where we were elected to. So I realize that there's things inside of our city that's happening, but the last time I checked, I was elected there. And so I believe that we should be working with the chamber to advance towards what is Morden doing, what is Morden Chamber doing, and the city, and how can we all connect together to learn from them? Because apparently, the provincial and federal, there's a lot of issues there, and I don't think business got two to three years waiting for someone to show up. Businesses well closed, businesses will not be able to carry on if they don't have a workforce to help them. And I think people are getting burned at the start of it. And thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing that. Thank you very much for coming, and like I said, it has been an ongoing issue that we've been working. But, uh, Councilor Elsver says, the more people working together, the better, I guess. Look forward to, I know we have a chamber meeting coming up very shortly, and maybe there's some ideas that we can incorporate in there at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you can all stay and listen to the council meeting. Instead of slinking out. Thank you very much for attending. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next, we're gonna go to community comments and feedback.
Bottom of the check, twenty- half street. Uh, with what I just heard, I gotta ask the question, if we aren't considered rural, what are we considered? Are we considered urban?
I am unable to answer how the government classifies.
You don't know how many toxic systems there are then? Sorry? You don't know how many classifications there are?
I have no idea how they came to that determination.
Okay, thanks. Uh, next question on the check register, check number zero, zero, three, four, six, seven, eight, and the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars and seventy, or ninety-six thousand and seventy-nine dollars to MAPS. Uh, where does that money originate?
Yep, that money comes from reaching home, which is a federal government program of homelessness. So that money is a flow through. From the problems, no, from the federal government, federal, okay, yeah. Thanks.
I'm seeing, so there is no other person here for comment, making comments. We will move on. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Our first job report is six point one, the June check registers administration.
Uh, nothing further reports there, and if there's any questions, counsel, we can get that back to, either I can answer tonight, or we can get an answer back to you shortly.
Councilor Juan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the check, I, I had a question last time. And it was three, four, five, four, three to the same person. So the answer from administration last time, there was a last check to this particular person, but I seen this showing up. This which check register again, so is there any explanation for that?
Oh, I see, yeah. Uh, yeah, that one would probably be the timing of when they cut the check. So the first, this is the June's check register, so this is the beginning of June. The person finished their last day work on May.
So there's a withhold for two weeks somewhere?
It would have been processed, the last invoices would have been submitted on May thirty-first. Was that, was that that person's last day? The check would have been processed in a week or two to finance.
Uh, how?
Yeah, I'm, I'll hold until after the check registers. I actually had a question regarding community comment and feedback. I'll wait until you're done with the section.
Is there any more questions on the check register? Councilor Elsver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, my question really is, why can't we have the financial officer to answer a question from the check register? I've gone through the check register line by line, and there's many questions that I might have. But again, I don't wanna be waiting till next meeting or an email to get them. I did read them all true, but I certainly would like to see in the future the financial officer here to answer these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I know there is a request, although we have any questions to get the minimum, make sure they're answered, but we will put forward the outcome before us as counsel. Uh without regrets, thanks. And any other question on check registers? Okay, seeing none, uh Councilor Paul, did you have something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, you jumped ahead to the reports prior to leaving of the meeting. Uh I had raised a concern a number of years ago and of course I was not uh at the last meeting, but um. Uh I'm wondering if we were able to provide an answer to Mr. Overdorff's questions publicly during a meeting. And I believe he presented at Committee of the Hall, correct? I believe he was a delegate of the Committee of the Hall, which would then require. An answer in Committee of Hall and that we've already established that those would be con public. I raised this issue um two meetings ago uh with regards to whether or not that information would be shared. Uh it is at when we have established that the answers are public and that they are to be raised in the same form that they're passed in. And so I'm asking through the mayor to administration whether or not that's done and why not.
That's not done. I'm gonna ask, uh tell me to make a note for me to bring that forward to the next meeting.
Uh just to note that one of the uh questions there was when would the properties on the other side of the river become available for purchase? Number of people have asked, uh having seen that, I'm expecting an answer and awaiting myself potentially included, but uh. Uh very interested to see that, but also more importantly is that if we've established a a general procedural. Guideline or whatever it is guiding this, um whether it's just internal or an accepted practice that we continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? We're just gonna go on to legislature and we're going to talk over the point in time, why it coming to.
This is just a report for information, counsel, I really have nothing to present, because it's not my report. But it's the point in time of homelessness in this community. Um information's there for counsel to review and the council wants to uh request that they come present. Or to have a session with this organization, administration can make arrangements to do so.
All the councils?
And I'll just note that this is funded by Reaching Home, so this is another program of the Reaching Home funding from the federal government.
Councilor Cooper? Oh no, sorry, Councilor Elmer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think we look alike, but uh. These are three large documents, I think it was one twenty-seven pages, one eighty-seven pages. And I'm gonna be honest with you about it, I did read the twenty-seven, eighty-seven, I got to the other one. And it was spinning, it was starting to go bad. I think for myself personally reading through it, there's a lot of data, there's, there's a lot of. Questions I might have about going forward. When it's referral to doing more surveys, I'm gonna be honest and I'll publicly say it. I think we're surveyed to death, we ought to know what the issues in Thompson is by now with that kind of a report. Not suggesting we should never do another uh sometime in the road. But I I am quite concerned when I. Read the report, the timeliness of it, three months away from from basically the election, number one. Number two, I think we would be further read if we had an open dialogue. And an in-camera meeting to discuss it so that council can freely then speak about what they think the recommendation was. Or should be, whatever offending people. Because I I'm looking at it differently than some of the people that was there, even though I respect the people that did the study. I know a lot of them, but to me, it was not really truly in my opinion. It's not being addressed while we have the issues now available about it, it really isn't. It seems like we repeat over and over, and the last point I might make is that. Uh it suggests by two thousand and twenty-eight. That we would be, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a lot of information, we would be at fifty percent reduction. But only the homelessness, that's what we should be working towards, and yet we see it escalating all the time. So so to me, everything we have done, and we can talk about the pandemic all the way. This is not just the pandemic problem, it's getting worse, not better. So these are my comments, I don't expect any feedback from it. It's just that I think that for council itself, we've a lot further read to have a summary. Rather than the two hundred pages amongst three, three documents, I believe it's over two hundred pages combined. That's a lot of reading to get prepared for in a meeting when I when I opened up, I was on the road and opened up, I'd seen it. I thought I need to be prepared and try to be prepared, but I I think we would be a lot further read as elected body if we. Discuss the in-camera or at a special meeting or as the uh administrator have said, possibly a presentation. And I would even suggest then being in camera so we can openly ask questions that. Uh we need to ask and and certainly going forward. Uh we have a huge issue with homelessness that we do have to address at the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, yes, counsel, I can't speak to the content, but I can speak to the timing. Um the reason that it's coming out now is that the. The pit counts are required to be done at the same time across Canada, that's a federal directive. So that's why the timing of when the report was, the count was done and the report is coming out. Um and the reason that it's repeated multiple times, the multiple surveys, it's also a federal requirement. So when they develop their reaching home money, they put a certain amount aside and it's a requirement that that reaching home money go to pit cats. On the schedule that the federal government decides. So I can just speak to the process, not to the content.
Thank you, anybody else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just uh I I wouldn't say that I've gone through this in great detail, but. It is interesting seeing the contrast of what the Chamber of Commerce has sat here and what we see in this report. If you look in here, for example, on one of the slides, uh reason for housing losses, not enough income for housing. Would indicate that, at least in this report, that there's a desire to work and a desire to make more income. Meanwhile, we've got clearly um a shortage of uh. Labor in the community according to the Chamber of Commerce. I like Counselor Elmer have real issues with fact, there doesn't, in my opinion, uh seem to um. Get to the the bare bones of this issue, I'm not gonna bring that up here, because I'm not that brave today, but uh. I I don't think we're gonna be able to deal with these issues until we have a real uh. Practical and straightforward conversation with our surrounding communities. Who uh have a long history of leaving their people here um unsupported. And uh I think I'll leave it at that, that comment there says it all to me.
Uh thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I too uh I read, I actually. Uh privy to the report in the last couple of weeks, so I've been reading it in stages. And I do though have to go back over some things that seem to be repetitious or not. So I do think I would like definitely to have a meeting with the people that brought this forward. Their thoughts of how they got it, because I too uh thought there was gaps and how uh you know, even questions asked or not asked and that. So I I, my recommendation would be to have a a meeting, I think, with the point in time or or account. Uh but in camera so that we can uh all be um. Uh you know, free to ask questions and understand each other and uh was wondering if Anthony, if you could maybe check out setting that up.
Yeah, that's counsel's will, that's why it was brought forward, we can definitely set something.
Think by show hands, who would like that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just to, just to, let's be clear about one thing. And not not allow the public to think something else. The in-camera is is in my opinion, just so that we have an opportunity to understand it. I I can't, I can't for for the the. Understand how we would come in a, you know, Committee of the Hall or regular council meeting and try to get into a two-hundred and something page or. It we we would just end up into a fight or something that I wouldn't wanna walk down that road. Until we had more understanding of the report and had the ability to ask those, but not hiding anything from the public. Is better prepared to present to the public when we find out what's really.
Exactly, then we're all on the same page, sir. And I'm definitely, we will be going public, it's just that I think for us to understand it and having such a huge document, it's better to do it. Uh this way then we're not all under scrutiny, yes?
Yeah, so technically it won't be, a number of councils will call it an in-camera meeting, it won't be an in-camera meeting, it'll be a consultation. So it'll be almost like when you're meeting any community group, you're meeting directly with them and having a discussion, it's not like it's muted. Um and then if you wanna have, because it doesn't meet the definition of want to be put in camera. So if you wanna do a consultation, we'll set up a consultation, but um it's technically not an in-camera meeting.
Okay, sounds, sounds good, Paul, and that way uh the other. You know, point in time, people can bring the person, people that they feel they need to have to answer our questions to. Okay, thank you. Uh next, we have the newsletter for citizens protecting our northern waterways.
So again, this is just for information for counsel, um and to share with the city for. So it's really just for information, um nothing much to say, except to note that um John McDonald is one of our school trustees. Is the local representative on this organization.
Thank you. Paul for adjournment? Uh Councilor Elmer, do you bear none of our all of favor? Perry, just reminder to council that we're gonna go back in camera, please use your other link that we had before. And how I set that up, so just give me a few minutes.